We're here tonight to discuss the air quality permit application for Chief Gathering LLC to build a natural gas compressor station in Washington Township, Wyoming County. Before we get started, I'll lay out the ground rules down for this evening. The first part of our meeting, first part of this evening is going to be a public meeting, where you'll have a chance to ask questions from DEP officials and from chief officials. I'll introduce them in a minute. Couple of ground rules to go by. If you come up to the podium, please say and spell your name and where you're from. That's just for our record purposes, so the standard of who's who you are. And that's not a meeting, but if you raise your hand, just come down. We have a word for the public here. Please go of your turn. Please don't speak over someone who is talking. Please direct your questions either by chief or DEP. We'll do our best to answer you and try our hardest to come up with something to do. I ask that you turn your cell phones off, or at least put them on vibration, so we're not going to hear them tonight. I know you have a lot of questions tonight, and we're going to do our very best to answer those questions as thoroughly and as promptly as we possibly can. You may not have all the answers, but certainly we'll give you our best educated, not yes, but best educated answer, okay? There is one thing I'd like to bring up tonight. I know we're all aware of the incident at another natural gas compressor station in Sault Ste. Anne County. I just want to make clear that we're here tonight to talk about the Chief Gathering application to build a compressor station in Washington Township here in Wyoming County. That incident will be addressed by DEP at another public briefing, which is scheduled next week, the 17th Tuesday, in Sault Ste. Anne County. And then the public meeting hearing, as I said, for that night, is pushed back to April 26th. And more details on that will follow on the DEP website, okay? After the public meeting, we'll go to the public hearing, which is where we take testimony. We don't answer questions, we just take testimony. So when we break between the meeting and the hearing, if we have time to break, I'll ask anyone who didn't sign up to ask to offer testimony, please offer some testimony. Please keep your questions brief, to one follow-up question, so we can keep the meeting going. The meeting is scheduled to begin at 6:00 until 7:00 o'clock, okay? And then after that, we'll go right into the public hearing and testimony. It's being recorded, so we ask that you please speak clearly and slowly, so this is not for who's sitting right next to you, okay, to report what you're saying. First thing we have is, I'm going to introduce the representatives of Chief Gathering, both by mind. Chi-Chi here, if you want to stand up and say something. This is Chief Gathering Operations Manager, who handles, of course, operations, training and safety. Ultimately, Brian is Chief Gathering Environmental Manager, who handles site location, land development, noise and lighting. Right here, we have Tom, who's in the meeting, he's with Trinity Consultants, who wants his consulting work for Chief Gathering. He's part of air permitting, air quality and monitoring. And we have Jeffrey Malik here, who's Chief Gathering Legal Counselor for Chief Gathering. He can pretty much answer most of your legal questions. Okay. For DEP, as I said, my name is Conley Conley. I'll be moderating this meeting slash hearing tonight. We have Mark Waitscher, who's our air quality program manager at DEP. Ray Kamla is our environmental engineering manager. And Brian Halcheck is our air quality engineer. I'm giving you a brief description of this project, and I'll also state that it started in public hearing, which also... This is a meeting slash hearing to answer questions and take testimony about Chief Gathering LLC's application for air quality plan approval to build a air quality compressor station, a natural gas compressor station, excuse me, in Washington Township, Wyoming County. They filed the application on July 5th, 2011, with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. The natural gas compressor station is designed to receive gas from gathering pipelines, compress, drive gas and transfer to the interstate pipelines here in Oklahoma, Pennsylvania. The site is located, as I said, in Washington Township, Wyoming County, 40 acre eastment on the lands of Francis Hurkey. You're all familiar with that site. It's eight compressor station engines, proposed natural gas-fired Catycone model, lean burn, low emission units rated at 2,370 horsepower. In this paper, we'll be on air if you want to review it. Each of the two proposed dehydration units, the compressor, will consist of an absorber rated at 250 million cubic cubic feet. Just a brief overview of what's going to be going here. At this point, we're going to start asking questions. When we start the public hearing, I'll let you know when you can submit your comments, if you want to offer more testimony. That will happen at the end of the public hearing. Any questions before we start? Is everyone clear on what's going to happen right now? Okay, we're all clear. We're going to go ahead with the meeting portion of tonight's event. And the first person who wants to come up, anyone who wants to ask a question, they're ready to take questions from the audience, just come up to the podium. Okay, say your name.
My name is Joe Luzey. That's J-U-Z-E-Y. I'm a local environmental engineer. And is this not...
Can you hear me? No. Close enough.
Okay. This is a question of the top. I understand that the application for this site ends up developing thermal oxidizer? And I'm wondering what source that's under control? And is it actually a thermal oxidizer that has a residence time with destruction temperature to achieve the desired goals? And/or is it more of a flare? In other words, does it address the engines, or is it the dehydrator, or both?
The thermal oxidizer is installed on the dehydrated streams. And there is a temperature limit in the ground approved for 1,500 degrees Fahrenheit. Do they have anything?
For high temperature. There's a thermal limit of 1,500, but is there minimum temperature?
There's a minimum temperature of 1,500 degrees to ensure that proper combustion is possible.
As a maximum?
Oh, it's a minimum temperature?
Yes. Okay, and so the on-gases from the dehydrator end up being a thermal oxidizer that has a minimum residence time for minimum destruction temperature? And is it a large device? Do you know how much volume CFM? What I'm concerned with is, I haven't seen thermal oxidizers applied to dehydrators before. I have seen layers. And so I'm wondering how you size something like that without it going off on high thermal overload, when you have a lot of... The amount of gases that are coming out would be the methane. And you're going to pass that through with the water vapor? And then you're going to take all that air and you're going to take it up to temperature? I'm thinking it must be a very large device.
How large is a...
Large is, I guess, 25,000 or 50,000 CFM? And I don't think that it is, so that's why I'm wondering, how is this... How is the supply? If you want, this is like a...
Can you read the question again?
I'm asking about the size of the thermal oxidizer for the source of the dehydration. 250 million cubic feet per day each. And I'm wondering what the top, at the top of the structure, the absorber, the issue's going to be made up of water vapor and methane. That's going to pass through to the oxidizer. And I'm wondering what the CFM is from the two of those very large dehydrators? And then I'm thinking that it's quite a volume. It's not on top of a CFM. So if it's 50,000 CFM, that's quite a sized device. I don't know how this is designed.
We provided a design specification for the thermal oxidizer as part of the application. We're hearing that document now. Did the flow rate, you don't mention the flow rate, but then hearing the thermal oxidizer is 90,000 seven hundred percent cubic feet per hour.
Per hour, correct. That's 300 CFM. The two dehydrators, 250 million cubic feet, 250 million cubic feet per day.
The 250 million cubic feet per day is what's processed in dehydration, not what's emitted.
So the top of each of these columns would take just one action. Each gets 1,150 CFM going to the outside, which is being captured by the thermal oxidizer? Which would be about maybe 4 inches, 6 inches, any other type? It just seems like a...
Yeah, I love the columns, a lot of six inches.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next question. Anyone else have a question? Come up to the podium. Say your name.
I want to give my name.
Yes, maybe that's a little stuck.
Dearest Crockett, 7481. You know, I bet you don't like the idea of giving addresses out.
I'm sorry, did you say your address again?
I'm not going to say the address. I'm going to say the town. Because I think it's a pride of the narrative. Because, you know, I have been a little threatening.
That's fine.
Okay, just, I'd like to ask that we had an explosion in Lake River compressor station in Springfield, Pennsylvania about a week ago. I'd like to know how close... This thing is not working so good. Your PA system's really not that good. I'd like to know how close is the closest homes to this site? It's a 40 acre site from what I'm hearing. How close are the closest home? Are they 1,000 feet away, 300 feet, any of you know?
The closest relative is 842 feet. Or I'm sorry, the facility is located 842 feet northeast of the existing residence. And that's to the edge of the pad, so we're probably another 250 feet to the actual building. The explosive residence was to the northeast of the facility, which is approximately around 100 feet.
So you have, how many residences close, like around 1,000 feet, to residences? And then everything else is beyond that?
That's correct.
So I'd like to know what kind of emergency plan do you have for this facility, in case you have an explosion like we had in our county, Sault Ste. Anne County, which I watched burn for two hours, and smoke had burned, and nobody to go near it until the pressure went down. And then the homes around that area, within a half a mile, felt the impact, and they shook it. And I spoke to some homeowners there, how the homes rattled and shook from that explosion. So I'd like to know what kind of emergency plan do you have? And do you have, related to that facility, a phone truck? Which we did not have, still did not have in our county, despite the fact that we have several compressor stations. We had to bring in a phone truck from two counties away. So do you have one here in Wyoming County? And are you paying for it? And who's paying for it?
As to your first question regarding the emergency action plan, we could develop an integrated SPCC/PTC plan, still prevention and counter control plan. In that plan, we outline emergency response procedures, the duties of the first responders to the facility, and the emergency. We have had numerous meetings with the Wyoming County EMA, and the view of this plan, and then we provide digital copies of the plan to them, to be able to provide that in each one of their vehicles, their response vehicles. This plan is also posted at the main at the facility itself. The plan also includes all emergency phone numbers for both chief personnel, for all local hospitals, fire, police. Reverting your question, on the phone truck, I cannot answer that question for whatever kind of impact.
Well, can you find out, because I think that's a vital thing to have, since we had to wait over two hours for the phone truck to arrive, since our county doesn't even have the foresight to have one. And hopefully now, after this fire explosion, they will.
Okay, well, I don't think... I believe the question on the phone truck is a question they can answer. You have to take that up with the fire company or Wyoming County EMA.
Well, it's a question I'm taking as up with chief.
Pardon me?
I'm taking it up with chief. I'm not accusing the fire department.
You can answer that question, then. We have to...
Well, I'll just present it to them. As part of your emergency plan, it suggests you include a phone truck.
Sorry, this is not for suggestions, this is just for questions.
Oh, really?
It's a question, you have to contact Wyoming County EMA at the phone truck in the county. It would be disingenuous for them to answer that question.
Well, they don't have to answer it. They can just now have the thought in their minds.
Well, we're not here to answer questions. We're not here to take testimony. Testimony started here. This is just for question and answer. They didn't answer your questions.
And I'd like to know, make sure you evacuate the people from the homes, which they didn't do in our county around this facility. Make sure you evacuate the people.
Okay, and we're not here to take a testimony, we're taking advice. We're here to answer questions.
Well, I don't consider this testimony a considerable suggestion.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, next question. Go ahead, then maybe we can answer.
Emily Craft, K-R-I-F, J-A-Z-K. I'm resident in Wyoming County. I have seven questions that are pretty quick compared to these other ones, if you'd be okay. I was wondering what the daily maximum volume that the compressor engines can handle starts moving the gas?
Your question is, how much volume out of each compressor?
A total for the whole facility. If you know for one, that's fine.
Eight compressors will probably do, we designed for their dehydration facility, so it'd be at this time, 500 million a day, roughly.
Okay. Do you have plans for more expansion to the system, say, like in two years?
Possibly. Right now, we're planning for what we permitted for.
Okay, so what you've permitted for, is that handle capacity of a pipeline generally?
Yes.
Which emission that comes out of facilities of your greatest concern?
I guess gas would be mine, because that's what we're in the business of moving. I don't really have a concern with the emissions, because the way we're managing, like the treatment of the facility is with...
Okay. Will you have any employees on the ground there, or any kind of regular schedule?
Yes.
Any emergency generators, is that diesel or is that natural gas?
Well, if I had my choice, it'd be natural gas, because the fuels there are available.
But you don't have that spec yet?
No.
Okay. Now, I was just confused, because I haven't seen this before, and I thought maybe it'd be 20. You have any air conditioning units being permitted for this site, but also for the Chaykin site in Wyoming Township? And I was just wondering, why do you need air conditioning units down there as well?
Well, the Chaykin site will be reacting to all the gas. The, that runs to the station is the unit at the Hurkey Station, big with the fuel system.
Oh, okay.
Or the engine.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen, K-R-I-S-T-I-N, L-A-N-D, L-A-U-N-D-I-O-N. And I'm a resident of Lake River, Hero. I have a few questions this evening. The first question, I believe you answered somewhat with Emily's question. But I want to know, this is a manned facility, and if it is manned, is it manned 24/7? And if so, how many people will be handling the facility?
Typically, we have personnel at the facility at least eight hours a day. After the eight hours replaces, it pretty much watches itself, it's automatically shut down. On a light presence, each personnel will have agency to track down points, to monitor if it gets out of spec, it shuts down automatically. We see the need, on the eight hours a day, in huge style.
Okay, so you don't have any people there? I'd like to say, do you happen to, you know, does this facility run from a similar, like, knock center, a centralized center that Chief Gathering has, where it is manned 24/7? So that if some of these devices you have that look and shut themselves down supposedly, that there is actual human interaction looking at this, so that if there is an issue, there's somebody immediately able to be dispatched to the location?
No, we don't run like that, as well as others, definitely.
Okay, so there's no people on or use this facility?
There is a, we have satellite communications as well as phone lines with the facility. It's certainly mostly shut down. The operators notify, they get emailed and a phone call. We also have a 1-800 number, we call it an emergency number, they're notified as well. So they follow up with a phone call. So you have three points of communication, three instances you'll get notified as well.
I'd like to know, just in general, I don't really know how these facilities operate, but in the case of some type of natural disaster, or tornado hits that facility, we had an earthquake, both of which I've heard here within the past 10 years, what would physically happen if, say, that building got torn apart, and one of those compressors got knocked off its facility, if that's possible? What would, do you estimate, what would happen? Would all that natural gas that is dehydrated burst out into the environment, would there be an automatic explosion? Just in general, what would happen?
Well, as you can tell, I'm up from here, I'm a resident of Oklahoma. And we have many tornadoes, since that's pretty much really the right of it. And I've seen compressor stations that's been through tornadoes and activity. And the gas plants too, we have liquid hydrocarbons or hydroelectric panel. The only thing that happened there was side glazes will break. And when they do break, they have checkrabs inside, so when they depressur, they check off and they seal. So at that, at that, where I had personal experience at this facility, everything was fine. It shut down. The top, there was an operator, the president, who shuts down, but the place was still safe. It wasn't an explosion, it wasn't a fire.
Thank you. Second one?
Me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Emily, the Rio County Township President. Yesterday, reading the news, I noticed that Penn Virginia paid a billion dollars to the firm on Tuesday, 10/22, for the purchase of their privately owned firm. So what does this mean to this hearing? And who shall be held responsible for shit things go wrong?
Sale engine, I missed it, was a company purchase. Chief Gathering LLC still does exist. It is owned or will be owned by PBR instead of G E and the holdings. So the applicant is still Chief Gathering LLC. And any correspondence or any inquiries still can be made to Chief Gathering LLC, their YAP, that's still pending here tonight.
Okay, and we have a sore subject that I wanted to bring up, is something the square district brought up earlier. How come the DEP isn't making it mandatory that built-in phone suppression systems be built automatically into state machinery?
Someone's safety features are in our review process. The review process that our air quality staff does is on the air pollution sources, are you waiting emissions? Do we all have safety features for utilizing the facility? So something like that, it'll be in our regulations to require phones for pressure systems. We have monitoring systems that are required to show proper operation of the sources, but that's basically where our regulations stop.
Well, I found a phone that she was, or Lady Birdlock on the tax papers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question?
Victoria Slizer, the... We I-C-T-O-R-F-A-K-S-W-I-T, C-L-A. Odd question. In gas compressor stations, there's a high risk of fire explosion due to combination of intense heat, pressure and vibrations. It is extremely important to take precaution in order to prevent gas compressor explosions and fires. Early gas leak detection is critical in this environment. Can you tell me what you plan on using, what kind of gas detection system you're going to be using at this compressor station?
In each compressor, over each compressor, it's up there, say, one or two, we use a general monitor, ground, and air protection. That's what we do.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question, please? If someone's fine.
Evening, Craig Stevens, C-R-A-I-G-E-S-T-E-V-E-N-S, Sault Ste. Anne Township, Pennsylvania. Couple of questions. I'll direct the first ones to the chief people. What's the distance of the safety shut-off valves, the on-gas shut-off valves, on each side of the compressor station?
You say, what's it? There we go. Now, what was your question?
What I've noticed at the compressor station in Springfield, was the gas kept coming, and that's why the fire kept burning. So I'm wondering, how far apart from the station does that gas get shut off? Because literally, it didn't just get shut off, it kept coming from a, a resource, over how many feet or miles away on both sides of the station, do the shut-off valves exist to turn off the gas in the facility?
I don't know how their station is designed, but...
Yeah, I did live in this question.
I'm joining you, because I'm about their station in relation to the one I have.
Our station is designed to shut the gas off immediately where it enters the station, where the pipeline comes out of the ground, past the big receiver, and immediately where it exits the station. But it also shuts the fuel system off, so everything's isolated.
This is also related to a question earlier about security or people. If there's people every hour, is there 24-hour video monitoring, either if, who's entering or within the building? Perfect, okay. This is for DEP. When it's... When an explosion does occur, I know there's limits on the air, the air quality exposure to the environment, does that factor into how much they're allowed to put out? I mean, you have an explosion, a fire, that's going to put a lot of different things into the air. Does that factor into it?
An accidental release of fire, we don't account for those emissions, but preventing the gas, which I think can take place, emergency shutdowns of the vented gas outlet, we want accountability on those emissions.
And final question to the DEP also, I noticed from my doing some research and calling people, I noticed the PUC showed up at that location, this is directed to this one we built. They showed up last because they didn't have jurisdiction. The federal government doesn't have jurisdiction. And I understand from the statements in the paper that the DEP asked Williams not to fire back up, so I'm going to ask the question, here's if they're going to build one here. Who's in charge of these things when something happens after the firefighters put the fire out?
Well, we're not, air quality, our main purpose is the air emission sources. Right, we can get into that next week when we have the air reading, we must say nothing wrong, they didn't want, we are dropping conditions to require the facility to shut down, that they don't start until they get approval from DEP, so we're looking into additional conditions to address situations like that.
Perfect.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Superbagger, R E B C C A, R O T D R, and Kingsley, actually, I'm from County, Pennsylvania. And my question is in regard to Mr. Stevens, director to you, chief. If DEP requested that you not start compressor up until they were satisfied with their investigation, even if it's not in the rules and regulations, would you honor your request?
We don't like to... Generally, we don't like to answer, I'll speak this way, you can hear me. Generally, we don't like to answer speculative questions. However, chief has been committed and continues to be committed to working with DEP, and surely anything that DEP says or recommends, chief would take into serious consideration. As to what they would do if that specific quest came about, we can't speculate, but we do work with DEP, we're committed to working with DEP, DEP, and will continue to do so.
Maybe I should rephrase my question. Would she, no, I'm not going to rephrase it, but I think you didn't want to answer it, that's okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a question? We still have a couple more minutes, we have to talk.
Can I go up again?
If there's anyone else that doesn't have a question, before I allow people to ask again, just, if you have a good question, if you want to come down to the conversation.
My name is Richard I A D E, I'm from Dunbar. I'm just curious as to how you would classify the noise level from your station. I thought I heard 28,000 or so, which is roughly enough for a kind of delivery. How, how much attenuation sound do you have generally? Is this a stop-start thing or continuous sound? I'm thinking in terms of residents nearby and how they might read the noise.
Thank you for your question. This facility, we have designed eight individual buildings. These buildings are compact in size to allow us to maximize our efficiency with providing the premier insulation and noise protection for the facility. In addition, the exhaust will be, will include not-for-rate low-down silencers, and will also employ low-speed fan on the coolers. The normal operational noise which were bound to appear to will not exceed 60 decibels.
How would you relate that to something that I could think of? One of, try to find factors, is there any...
Generally, I think ambient noise, which would be, I'm just trying to think, we did perform predeveloped noise study on the facility, and that was all required as part of Washington County's approval of our land development portion. As I recall, you were probably in the highs or lows, if I'm correct, I can't speak exactly what it was.
And is this continuous noise or is it stop-start?
It's generally continuous.
24 hours a day?
As long as they're, as long as they're operating.
In certain compressor stations, and I hate to mention other stations, but would your station have any noise like a 740 set open up wide periodically, kind of a shrieking blow-off noise? Is this a bunch of, a bunch of stations? I heard this actually, by some compressor stations.
No, we should not experience that, however, there is an emergency situation where we would have a low-down, you may experience a thousand noise.
How often is that a...
Gary Tate won't be here once a year because we tested, but I hear everybody knows for him. And then it's just a bug, and then you have an emergency, we don't like to have it start spaced lately, I can't, did you throw out that?
Okay.
Thank you. Hang on, I just want to make sure whoever hasn't gone yet started, I want to give someone who hasn't had a chance.
Yeah, my name is Bill Ferulow, F E R U L O, and my question is in relation to that other fellow's question. You mentioned, I thought I heard 60 decibels, right? I think that's what I heard, 60 decibels. Okay, 60 decibels, what's the closest residence for, to that compressor station? And at 60 decibels, I watch feet from that compressor station. In other words, what's the closest residence to that, to that compressor station?
The closest residence that I've seen before is approximately 842 feet south.
Okay, now, what's the range in decibels at 800 and whatever you just said? 60, 60 is a lot of decibels, and that's it, it's not background noise, it's double background noise, so it's less than 24 hours, right?
Yes, we're required by the property, of course. So in this case, we have selected a parcel of site location that is in the rural area of Washington County, and we've given it a parcel wire, so we can ensure that we centralize our location of that facility to maximize our distance away from the existing residences.
Okay, right, there's still many people within 800 feet of that compressor station, correct?
There is one home at 840.
How many homes?
One.
One, okay, so that one by, that's it all, right? So, okay. My other question is with the DEP, I want to know, when you're permitting, supposedly going to permit this compressor station, is there any consideration going to have any of these compressor stations going in northeast of Pennsylvania, throughout the other counties? I'm from Bradford County, we have 10 proposed in Bradford County right now, and that's not South Florida County, Wyoming County, and whatever other county's in ourselves. What consideration or will there be some consideration into the impact on the region from all these compressor stations, which there will be impact?
Right, right now, we permit each one individually unless there's, you know, county control ownership and things like that, where aggregation gets involved. But, I mean, we did do an air quality risk assessment study a couple of years ago in the region, and central, north central, and southwest. Harrisburg is looking into long-term health studies, and they're going to start down in southwest and then continue from there. So right now, we're looking at long-term health studies for three purposes. We look at each one individually unless the regulations are set up by the regulations that we, you know, we stayed in the federal health.
So you have gotten to the point where somebody's looking at the whole group and the fact of all of this stuff that's going to be imposed, and I'm sure that it's already know how many compressor stations are going to be proposed in all the different counties and projected permits come. I mean, there's a major concern with the amount of emissions that are going to be put out by all of these things, all of these stations, and is the DEP on top of this or are you not there?
No, we're on top, that's why we're doing the long-term health studies. And also, like you said, I think it's pretty sure it's going to be started in southwest, which is having, which has that gas, which has, you know, more potential for emissions. So we're going to start down there, you know, get a worst-case scenario, and then go, you know, continue on. But, right, we recognize that there is conservative influence in effect, and that's why we're doing up studies, we did the short-term studies, and now we're looking at the long-term studies.
One more question.
Okay, one more thing. How often will you, will they be testing these areas? I mean, I'm familiar with the head of the, the director of the air of the DEP, I think her name's, her name is Joyce Head, okay? And I've talked with her already, and how often are these, are you going to be monitoring these things that affect people in communities around here? I mean, this has been an important thing, I mean, this is industrialization...
Is there a question? No one?
This is the same question.
Okay.
Okay, this is industrialization of country area, and I'm really concerned of, you know, like what's going to happen.
Right, we're tracking emissions, we're requiring all the natural gas production facilities to submit annual reports on their emissions. We're categorizing the locations of all of them throughout the state, emission data, so we are keeping track of all emissions from all compressor stations across the state right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who has asked a question, let's come down to you, raise your hand if you guys have a question. Sorry. I'm going to write a question, but you're not.
My name is Brett Jennings from Brickburn Borough. My own question is more directed to DEP. With a lot of the Chesapeake Bay issues, we're going to have air renovation, and there's also the change in area where this would be permanent. And the DEP is looking at these permanents, because we are in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. Are they going and looking at check rate of the empty energy room for the change in characterization of the sites being developed, for the increase in total nitrogen, total phosphorus, and sediment runoff, with changes in the area for all of those permanents? Because this isn't just one site with a watershed.
Right, just like all other shows, is that probably because we don't look at the position to, you know, Chesapeake Bay, it's just not part of our view?
Anyone else have a question? Ma'am?
I'm saying, sorry, you can say, Farquhar G O O T. And you're, you're, where are you from?
Dallas.
Okay.
I came in a little late, so procedurally, I'm not sure. I thought we were making statements, so, you know, should I ask questions?
This is the answer, ask questions and answer questions. Lydia, I don't have a phone here.
Okay.
Ask, if you do have a question.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'll ask a couple of questions now. Oh, I had some, okay, this is regarding the chemicals at a metering station. Is that, what's your question today? The, I happen to be living next to where a metering station has been approved, and the reason that I have questions regarding the compressor station is because the potential that if that were to also happen, if the situation occurs to you from my home. So I was concerned about the chemicals that were being used, that were capten and triethylene glycol, so my questions are pertaining to that.
What is your question?
I was wondering, I read the MSDF sheets, and on it, it states that among other things, if people susceptible to skin sensitization or asthma, allergies, chronic or recurrent respiratory disease, should not be employed in any process when those are used. And my family and I have asthma, so what I was wondering is how much exposure to that would be harmful? Like in a daily living, you know?
I believe on the MSDF, it was for if you're handling a product, you don't want to get it on your skin, because it has affinity for water, so like the pool water may, or water out of your skin, if you get it on you, you don't wear the right PPE that were required to wear. The, as far as the air emissions, all that exhaust out of the dehydrator will go through a distroker process through the thermal oxygen. So, emission-wise, we can keep, hope that would be, we can answer that.
Like daily exposure, whatever.
The thermal oxygen, it reduces the rain and spotting.
I think...
The, the, sorry, the thermal oxygen reduces the volatile organic by 99%.
Reduces the... Yeah, but what about the 1%? Like, since we're going to be living right next to it, that's what I'm concerned about.
He can't speak for the one that you're living next to, he can only speak for the one here in Washington County.
Well, I mean, the chemical, it's the same chemicals that'll be used at the compressor station too, so, I mean, that, the chemicals are all basically the same, right? Like the, the same mercaptan and trianthin.
I'm sorry, I repeat, there is a question.
Mercaptan would be used at that compressor station, right?
No.
What about the glycol?
Yes.
Okay, so no questions on mercaptan, just the...
We can only answer questions on the deo station here.
Okay, I didn't know what you were going to say. Well, I still have questions about that.
Everybody has questions because you're running out of time, so we get it.
Okay, well, it's, the trianthin glycol can cause eye and skin irritation, and has some chronic health effects, such as being toxic to the kidneys and the nervous system. But how long of the, after repeated prolonged exposure, what causes that prolonged and repeated exposure?
I believe that's based on an eight-hour exposure, if you're in it for eight hours a day, working in it. Again, the thermal oxygen is going to take all the emissions out of the reboilers then, and it's going to burn it, and 99% of what comes out of the dehydrator is going to be distrokered, so you're going to be exposed to the, what the MSDF considers that threshold you want to see there.
Is there a way to monitor that? Like for an individual living near a facility like that?
I'm not, maybe, it's, you may yourself, I, I...
But is there like a, a monitor that is available?
I would assume with today's technology, yes, but I don't know anybody that would have one personally.
Okay, that, that would be something else, would hope that maybe would come out of it, is if there were...
Well, then you, you can offer your testimony, you can hear it after this.
Okay, well, so it would be like reading a statement at the end?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll see it. Please.
Anyone else have a, a question? I just think we're just arriving with taking questions concerning a, uh, energy natural gas compressor station we built here in Miami County. Anyone else who has not asked a question, sir, to enter the call. And it's, it's over with this, with the, um, reading by the little center. Who would like a hand? Don Davis.
I'm afraid I couldn't make a connection. I didn't come to ask a question, but that's why I'm asking. Uh, will we go back to come on site and test ourselves for the other problem?
Sir, would you be willing to?
Come on site, yes, the person's built, and do our own testing, assuming the candidates will receive.
Say your answer.
Typically, we don't allow people on site, it's not permitted or employee's duty to come on site and ask.
Is that even now? Sorry, did you say now with you?
As far as testing?
Right.
That would be the D E P's, um, they test along our facilities, so I'm never going to have anybody in the land with any company, individuals out there.
Well, you're hearing that now, I'd like to comment, sir.
Pardon?
I'd like to comment, sir.
We employ people to test our...
I'll do it for free.
Okay, so we're just going to answer questions then, on the first basis, do you have another question?
Can you answer my question? That doesn't mean, no, I can't.
Sure answers, though, there's just too much liability.
That's all I said, but, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Anyone else who has not asked a question yet, sir?
Don Davis, I can't, but that's D E P. How long is your long-term study on air pollution?
What would be your time? Oh, I don't, I'm inherently supporting the oral ads. That's under our central office risk assessment group, the long-term health study. Right, it's not regionally coordinated, nor region, or any other region?
It's, it's related to our central office technical services staff, risk assessors, and a lot of there's been meterology just every now and then, Harrisburg. They're putting it all together on that, familiar with, you know, the timeline and the on-a-sample and all that. And I know it's very comprehensive, but I don't have a lot of specifics on it.
So what is your role in air pollution in this area?
We provide any air pollution sources within the other counties in Northeastern Pennsylvania. But we also have a bio-research group throughout the state where we all work to ensure consistency between regulations, and we use Harrisburg as our technical services for, you know, verification through, you know, standards and, uh, regulations. I mean, if you want to ask that question in the public hearing, we could certainly get an answer from Harrisburg if long-term health risks that's being conducted.
And, uh, I know the University of Miami doctor, and he's built on studies on pollution. And has anybody consulted him?
That, I'll, I'll, so I look at our, our Harrisburg, we have, we have a toxicologist and a lot of always that deal with this. They actually, we don't have the expertise in the region to do that long-term study. All of that is done on Harrisburg.
Okay, I get you.
Someone else who's there, have your hand raised, if they want to ask a question? Okay. Is there anyone else who has not asked a question, who would like to ask a question? Sir, please.
Name is Con Phillips, D O L, I am a scout. I'm, uh, I was just a P A, just a county. Mine's more general state.
No, sorry, it's a state that you're going to go over here, it's just a question.
Question. Uh, I would like to know what the gas flow path would be. I mean, simple thing, just ease a lot of people's que- questions that they have in their mind. Gas comes underground, we're talking about the D E P is going through, you know, uh, eight compressor engines to dehydrates, a reboiler, a catalytic oxidizer, a thermal oxidizer. These are all scary chemistry people. Gas comes underground.
Okay, so is this a question, let me answer that question.
What happens, sir?
The gas will enter the compressor station at the inlet side of the plant. It will flow into an inlet separator which knocks out free water out of the gap. And there, travel into a manifold system, which you'll have the eight compressors tied to the manifold, um, from there, go through two stages of compression. From, uh, we'll say three hundred pounds up to transcoventile pressure would be in excess of a thousand pounds. Uh, from there, travels out the, uh, goes through coolers at each, after each stage of compression. From there, travels back out to the manifold which travels, allows the gas to travel into inlet separate, or inlet contact, which, uh, is where we introduce the, uh, transcoventile valve for, uh, water maker removal. From there, it goes to the builder and then out, out to the, uh, outlet of the plant.
So the emissions points that the D E P is looking at are out of the engines, uh, the reboiler?
Yes, sir. The exhaust of the, uh, engine will be activated in burner, and much like your car has the same function in our exhaust system. And so it's, it's a black catalyst. Uh, they monitor the outlet of the exhaust. They also incorporate the, uh, outlets of the burners on the, uh, dehydrators and the emissions out of the, uh, uh, stripper column on the, uh, dehy system, on the regenerator, and as well as the thermal oxidizer exhaust.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has not asked a question, just ready to walk in, who would like to ask a question? Sir, if you can, please.
Edgar Walcott, I'm from Nashville. I'd like to know from the D E P, do you take any measurements of these gas releases and everything else yourself, or do you keep them on the gas company's release information?
Uh, the, the, this is, is that testing that's on the emissions?
I can't hear you.
Is that testing, or are actually packs and all releases?
All the releases.
Well, the emissions from the engines are a stack test, if you certify commission this companies that have the set protocols to us to show it at their valid test?
I, I can't hear you good, but I, I want to know, do you use ever monitor the results? Or do you take their word?
No, they have to hire a certified lab to come out and do the test. So the company won't do the test, they have to hire a consulting firm that does air monitoring and testing to do it.
And they hire their own firm, they hire somebody too?
They have to hire certified...
But what about you people, do you use hire everybody?
We could do our own testing on Harrisburg, but the testing companies that they hire have to be certified. And then, you know, there's, there's certain standards they have to meet.
That's why I can't follow.
Well, we do put on a certified...
I didn't hear what you're saying, and it makes noise.
Okay, so this is for questions, is that...
All right, I just want to know, do you don't do nothing here?
Well, we're going to verify this back testing.
Harrisburg, the people sit in the office, and they're going to call us up here.
You can offer testimony, but I'm here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here on your view, who wants to ask a question, have not gone so far? You want to raise your hand so we can see? Anyone else? Back up, any question, all right?
Craig Tomer, I'm a bit concerned about the air, uh, quality. And this is for the D E P. Given the track record with the D E P and dent with the water contamination, what are you guys going to do about air quality contamination with these compressor stations? I mean, you know, you guys have just gone up and down and over places, dent.
Okay, was there a question?
Yeah, what are you going to do about it?
What are we going to do about air quality?
Yeah.
Right, when we do these, we require best-of-the-technology, we do, so we look at the lowest emitting sources that are available. So basically, you know, it's, it's technology-driven. If, if an engine manufacturer puts out a lower emitting engines, and it's shown to be acceptable within the, within that type of tech, you know, uh, industry, then we require that lower emitting technology. So we won't, you know, right now, most engines are permitted at point five grams per kilo horsepower hour. We won't allow engines anything higher than that. If manufacturers start to know what engines that can emit lower than that, then that's something to look into and, and technology raises standards down even lower. A couple of years ago, the standard used to be two grams, now we're getting point five grams, so... Normally, you see these trends, when, you know, you get influx of similar sources, manufacturers are out there competing to get lower emitting engines, and we've seen that over the last several years with these engine technology reducing the emissions.
Okay, who's going to oversee the compressor stations? Because the strength bill, I mean, nobody seems to mind. Nobody will take the bull by the horn with that.
Can I ask about one in this particular, is there a question, sir?
Yeah, who's going to oversee the compressor stations?
We have our engineers that inspect the facility once it's complete and operational, and we have inspectors that come up periodically to inspect them. And normally when we do inspect, we don't give them heads up, we just show up in our own site and do a thorough justification into the whole facility.
So in other words, if you have a blowout, you know, a big flash fire, or whatever you want to call it, you have something like that, is it up to you to get the okay, whether to pump gas to there or not?
If we believe that the, the generating engines and the dehydrators and other contamination sources are compromised, then yes, we can have a say in the matter.
Who has the bottom side, whether it's the gas companies, or is it the D E P?
Well, like I said earlier, we're working on certain conditions that if there is a catastrophic failure and you have to shut down the whole facility, we're looking at permitting and doing requirements that would give us this, the say when they can start up again.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody needs to state your name and his name.
Jonathan Douglas, D O U, G L I S, Wyoming County. Uh, this is for the D E P. Do you actually have any authority to deny an application, or is it pretty much foregone to the case?
Well, certainly we can deny if we don't meet the regulations and the information we're requesting.
But it sounds like the regulations are very hazy. That you keep developing better regulations as you go along.
No, the regulations are consistent, it's just the technology that's out there. Best-of-the-technology is a, is a, is a, a technology that reduces emissions over time. Certainly, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, the technology wasn't out there to have lower emitting sources, and new technology comes out, they have lower emissions. But our regulations require each applicant to meet best-of-the-technology requirements, and that's a consistent statewide requirement.
And then the requirements for the health of the occupants of the county, do they change as you get better technology, or are we still suffering?
The ambient air quality standards are set by the federal U B A government. And we do have line change stations that have to stay, that monitor the, the quality of the air and sh- and they have to show up to meet these ambient air quality standards.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who, like, asks again, who's already seen, leave that there.
Yes, hi, I'm, my name is Lynn Stenek, I see, I'm I C K, and I live in Sussman County. I don't really understand all the technical aspects that we've been discussing tonight, but I've heard you say that you, um, your stacks are going to capture ninety-nine percent of the emissions? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
So, you can't, you said?
Yes.
So the one percent that is not captured when it's released, how mu- how much is that? How do you measure that?